Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator, controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong, solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator, controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives. So we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Roger.
Good morning, sir.
Responding appropriately.
Are you calling the meeting to order?
I'm calling the meeting to order.
Okay.
It's 8:30. This is the Finance, Physical Resources Committee.
I don't have an extra.
And the first agenda item is Public Comment. Anyone in the room?
You didn't get one in your mouth.
No.
Like the comment.
That's bizarre.
Seeing none, now we're going to go to the Consent Agenda. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Support.
Support. Thank you very much. Anyone here to remove one of the three items? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item three, Bureau of Equalization Report.
This is a request to recommend to the Board to approve the 2016 apportionment report. The general property tax law outlines the responsibility of the Board of Commissioners with respect to the annual apportionment report. The Board examines certificates of each local taxing jurisdiction and directs millage rates to be spread on taxable valuations. The Board of Commissioners also determines the dollar requirements necessary to fund the assessment for drains to be spread on their respective township and city rolls. Attached is the 2016 apportionment report as prepared by the Bureau of Equalization.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved. Support.
Support. Questions? Matt, you have... No, go ahead, Dave. Roger, just so get up here, Matt.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you. And definitely thank you for your continued hard work, trying to keep all these numbers straight. There are a lot of them. And not to ask for extra work, but something that I always look for, and unfortunately then I'm required to go into an Excel spreadsheet, is the taxable value per resident in a jurisdiction? Because the full amount, again, is good to know. However, when we start looking at taxable powers or not, accidents of a massive, you know, development in a township or a city, and how that can, you know, float or lessen that. So just the...I don't know if that's ever anything in your industry you look at, or you don't necessarily care, because that's more fodder for other conversations and arguments?
From time to time, you know, on a special project basis, we might overlay population or census data with the valuation data. From the purposes of the property tax, most of my thinking is centered around the parcels themselves. But certainly, if there were some analytical things that cross-footed population, that could be done on an ad hoc basis. But it doesn't typically come into the summary of the numbers that I typically bring for you. But be happy to try and put something together for you. I guess I'd need to refine what the question might be centered around.
Well, I mean, the center, for example, when we had conversations in the spring about the 911 surcharge.
Sure.
There was a small amount of debate between millage or surcharge. What's the most equitable way to, you know, get the needed resources that we felt we needed for the dispatch system?
Okay.
That being said, you know, a millage was pretty well not discussed, because a millage, at some level countywide, is felt inequitable. And this idea of when we're looking at that, yeah, I mean, for the valuation of a River Town Crossing mall, to pick on Senator Ponstein's neighborhood, you know, that River Town Crossing's mall happens to be in the city of Granville. However, I would argue it's a regional asset, where we as a county definitely get some value from that, and it adds to our bottom line. However, you know, what other impacts are there? And maybe my arguments are more relative to school funding. You know, I always have flashbacks to my days on the Grand Rapids School Board, where Grand Rapids, Forest Hills has 10 times the taxable value per student than Grand Rapids' public schools. So to say we have to have 10 times the tax level in Grand Rapids to have the same buying value as Forest Hills, and our buildings show that, in spite of the fact that we just passed the millage in the city, or at least in GRPS area for buildings. So when we start talking about unfairness of taxing or not, just that, I think that's a piece of the equation that would be helpful. And I've only heard tell that there are other millage proposals coming towards us. So it just, I think, would help us when we start struggling with our countywide millages equitable or not. So, and again, if it's going to take too much time, put it way, way back on your priority list.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, it's...
Careful what we ask for.
Right.
You know, we continue to...we just pushed around a little bit, new staff and all that kind of thing. And we keep adding stuff to the plate. If we need to do it, we need to do it. I get that.
Right.
You understand?
Yeah, and I guess, you know, in coordinating with Daryl, if there are specific questions where you want to introduce per capita type of analysis into some of those proposals, we can certainly work with our IT GIS team and, you know, try to attempt to provide some of that information for any of the questions that you may have. In terms of today's report, of course, it's really all about the millage rates and everything else. So I know your questions go beyond that, but, you know, we can certainly work with our IT GIS team and our mappers to try and answer any questions that do come up from time to time.
Thanks for pulling us back.
Yeah, yeah. So, thank you.
Any other questions on the motion, Stan?
Just a quick one, though.
Yeah.
Isn't that what GIS was invented for? So you could have all these layers of information that can just pop up on a city? Isn't that getting easier to do, or is it more difficult? Because everything I've seen in the speakers, all of saying the advances in here and the just the analytical information you can pile on top of each other can give you a good picture of a neighborhood from everything from.
The answer is yes. That's exactly what GIS is designed for, and it's getting better every single day. Of course, we have a substantial investment in GIS, and we have a very good GIS staff. We also have people within several other departments that are using GIS data every single day, from drains to equalization to health, public works, et cetera. And our ability to provide you all with better visuals and better analysis based on the geography is absolutely part of something that we can provide. And the layers are getting better and better all the time.
Okay, anyone else? I'm going to take a step off. I don't necessarily need to answer this now, but we talked a little bit ago about the budget session about, I think Stan asked a question, are we factoring in inflation into this whole thing?
Yeah.
What...because I don't need the answer right now, but Proposal A, if inflation, let's say, jumped 2%, 3%, 4%,
Right.
what would that do to our revenue? Or, you know, I'll say...
Yep. I do. Of course, Proposal A, there are really two main factors for, with regards to the property tax base. The one is the inflation rate that you're alluding to. And under the provisions of Proposal A, there's a cap on that, and the cap of that is 5% or the CPI, whichever is less.
Yeah.
We've never gotten to the 5% in my mind during the Proposal A era. It's always been somewhere between 0 and 3%, for the most part. And so if the CPI were to increase, let's say from the .9 that's predicted for this year to, let's say, 2% or 3%, then that would mean that all unsold properties in the coming year would be, if they grew in excess of 2% in their assess values, which the majority of them will, then their taxable values could then grow by that appropriate CPI as well. You know, obviously, taking that logically forward, if your CPI is 2%, then you certainly have an attendant amount of expense growth as well.
I understand that.
That, so it's sort of a zero-sum game when it comes to CPI. But the other factor then is, of course, what we call the net new construction, which is all your new construction minus all of the losses, or, you know, a house is built, a house burns down, net new cancels each other out. So how is your net new in addition to your CPI? And that's where our growth is going to come from in the future.
Well, real quick then, what's the lag then in that? So that if 2016 is a, or 2017 is a 3% CPI, when would that actually hit our revenue?
Right. So the CPI is set actually at the conclusion of this month for the calculation of the 2017 assessments. And so we're projecting that to be at .9% for 2017. The 2018 CPI will be pegged in September of 2017 for the 2018 year.
So it takes like at least a year for that 3% rise to actually hit?
Yeah. The CPI is finalized in September of the previous year sets the CPI for that next year.
So there's not a huge lag in that?
There's not a huge lag, you know, but...
All right. We digressed a little bit, but sometimes we just need to ask. Any questions on the motion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Daryl, please.
Okay. This is a request to recommend to the Board to accept an appropriate $750,000 in additional funding to the 2015-16 Health Fund Budget, $375,000 from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, $375,000 from the Heart of West Michigan United Way, and then to authorize the Board Chair to execute the grant agreement. The Health Department has received notice from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services that additional grant funds are available through the Capri-Hans program budget agreement with the, for the medical outreach program. The Health Department has partnered with Health Net of West Michigan and the Heart of West Michigan United Way to expand Medicaid outreach services through several community agencies. There are seven additional partners, the Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired, Arbor Circle Corporation, Family Outreach Center, the Salvation Army, Turning Point, Senior Neighbors, Thresholds, and the ASMA Network of West Michigan. The two original partners are Health Net of West Michigan and First Steps Kent. These agencies assist clients with their application for Medicaid benefits. They also provide information to clients about the many different Michigan Medicaid programs, such as well-child visits, immunizations, and lead testing, with the goal of connecting them to appropriate services. Translation services are also provided if needed. These services are provided to clients that the Health Department does not typically see. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services has provided $375,000 in additional funding to expand these services, and the Heart of West Michigan United Way has agreed to provide the additional $375,000 in match dollars. The $750,000 in additional funding was used to contract with these agencies to provide additional services that were not originally offered.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Support.
Okay. Questions? Dave?
My question is that, when did we get notice of this additional money? And is this a new grant from United Way, or is this was an existing grant that we've slid over to use for match?
It is, it's an expansion of existing grant dollars. And we learned of the expansion of the availability of funds from the state within the last, the last month or so.
And then United Way came up with an additional $375,000?
Yes. This allows them really to double their money. They would rather go through this process, because they get that drawdown from the state, that contribution to the state, instead of contributing that directly to these organizations.
So again, they had these dollars allocated to these organizations, and then they're laundering them through the Health Department...I mean, excuse me, contributing them through the Health Department, so as to match them to the state money?
That's correct.
Okay. So again, it was an original allocation?
Yeah, it's existing money that United Way has, that they have committed for this purpose.
Yep.
This allows them to get that state money to double up their effect.
All right.
Okay.
Cool. Thank you.
Perfect. Any other questions?
We have the same.
Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Item five, please. Daryl?
This is a request to, excuse me, recommend to the Board to approve the Health Department's Spectrum Health Foundation contract for 2016 and 17, accept an appropriate $238,797 to the 2016-17 Health Fund Budget, $182,195 from Spectrum Health Foundation, $56,602 included in the general fund budget, and to authorize the Board Chair to execute the grant agreement and approve a grant extensions and changes within 15% of the original award. Strong Beginnings is a home visiting program that uses community health workers to work alongside nurses and social workers in the maternal and infant care health program to provide services that do not require skill or expertise of a nurse or social worker. The Strong Beginnings program goals are to improve birth outcomes, reduce barriers to care, improve care for pregnant women, and engage the community to advocate for culturally competent care. The Health Department provides outreach support and case management services to high-risk women who live in Kent County and are pregnant or the mother of a child 0 to 2 years of age. The agreement period for the Spectrum Health Foundation contract is November 1, 2016 through October 31, 2017. And in the event that grant funding is eliminated or decreased, the positions funded by this grant will be eliminated unless continuing funding is approved pursuant to the fiscal policy on grants, contracts, and donations.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Thank you. Questions? Diane?
Thank you. I was just wondering, in reviewing the letter that's in the packet from Peggy, the Program Director for Strong Beginnings, they're waiting on the notice of grant award, and while they fully anticipate that happening, what happens if that doesn't?
It's a good question. If that doesn't, it would be, it would be a, it would be a huge surprise to us, because this has been the process in each of these years, as the HERSA has been slow with the NGA in each of the years. However, they have not failed to compensate or to come through in the past. So I think we're relying on the verbal assurance they have provided us, along with the commitment that Spectrum has made, that they want to see the program continue.
So does the, would the program go forward with the county dollars and spectrum dollars without, and they would just cut accordingly if the other funding doesn't come in? Is that the, would that be the plan?
Yeah. If the HERSA funds don't come in, which is, would be highly unexpected, the program would cease at that point.
Okay. Matt?
Just from my own understanding, how does this program connect with the women and children? Is it only through having a baby up the hill here, or?
Ideally, we get to them before that point. We'd like to have them when they're pregnant, so that we can start to coach them and work with them to build those skill sets well before they give birth. And so we work through a number of different service providers, including Spectrum, to get those who have been referred into the program as early as possible.
Great.
Anyone else?
The $56,602 in general fund, is that the '16 general fund or the '17 general fund? Or both? Since we haven't...
This is for '17.
Okay.
It's in the '17 budget.
Yeah.
Anyone else? All in, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Number six, Daryl, please.
This is a request to recommend to the Board to create a Meadows Wetland Restoration Project in the 2016 Capital Improvement Fund, Program Fund, and to accept an appropriate $400,000 from the Bill and B. Idoma Foundation for the project. Long-term plans for the meadows at Millennium Park include restoring wetlands at the south end of the project area by transforming a formal gravel pit to expand a naturalized lake, and naturalize a lake, the creating trail, and creating trail access and observation points. The Bill and B. Idoma Foundation has generously awarded the Parks Department a $400,000 grant to complete the work.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Support?
Moved and supported. Questions?
Just a quick one, and maybe Daryl can answer it. We do projects that deal with water, wetlands. Where does the EPA come in, and what role do they play?
I'm going to refer that one to Roger Spine, our Parks Director.
So this requires DEQ permitting, which we had in general prior to the Idoma Wetland Project. We had a wetland project already scheduled for this site, and it didn't make the 2016 construction, just because of budget issues. So Idoma stepped up and funded it. So we're just amending the existing permit that we have with DEQ.
Thanks.
Any other question? This is the, this is the property that goes underneath the wooden trussel?
Yes.
If you haven't been there and seen that, that's quite a, it's quite a structure, and when it gets water underneath, it's going to even be more impressive. Oh, okay. No other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, Idoma, for your donation. Seven. This is Madam Pay Review.
This is a report that was prepared by the MPP Review Subcommittee for, at this point, action to receive by the Finance Committee.
Okay, let's take a motion to receive it, and then we'll talk about it a little bit.
So moved. Support?
Support. Okay. Diane, you and Commissioner Bukowski and Voorhees were on the committee. Would you please walk us through this a little bit?
Absolutely. I'd like to start with thanking Commissioner Bukowski, Commissioner Voorhees, the staff, County Administrator Daryl Delavio, Human Resource Director Amy Rolston, and Fiscal Services Director Steve Dorarte. We met four times, March of this year through September, and we had a set charge. And the charge was to review the starting salary point and starting point strategy for the MPP new hires and promotions, review strategy for moving MPP employees through the salary range without a pay-for-performance system, review the number of current MPP employees whose salary is not at the midpoint after five years of employment, and the current strategy to address this, and develop an overall strategy to make the current MPP a workable and successful plan now and going forward. So with that being said, there are approximately 39 employees that this impacts. And I wanted to add that that has come down from 91, based on the current plan, which has been allocating an additional $200,000 to address the wage compression issue. So in looking at all of this, the bottom line, we came out with three recommendations. One, to make it a high priority to adjust to the degree possible the 39 employees who are below the wage penetration target and move them as soon as financially able. Two, focus on the good and better strategies, which are in the packet. And three, continue monitoring the MPP program and take place on an annual basis. So the part that I will add to this is, we've talked about areas where potentially new money can come in, whether it's from a millage passing or another source, to focus on that first item, we're making this a high priority, and to make sure that when new money shows up and that this gets surfaced again. And I think that was the, that was the bottom line of where the committee put forth this effort, the summary, and where we'd like to go with it. But in discussing this with the committee, we thought we accept the report here, have a discussion on it, because the Finance Committee could feel otherwise, could have a different direction, could chime in. So that's kind of what we, what our charge was, what we did, how we did it, and potentially where we're going with it.
Okay. Anyone have any comments or questions? Well, David, you were on the committee.
Yeah, I mean, I alluded to it at the work session, you know, as I had the opportunity to pore over this in the summer with Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Voorhees, and, you know, greatly helped by staff. It always is, at least in my day job, the hardest part is trying to be fair with employees who, yeah, we'll just leave it at that. And with this group of folks, you know, the more I think about it, it's the accident of when they got hired, how they moved through or didn't move through. And a month after we finished this, I'm feeling, to turn up the volume a little bit on the recommendations, me personally, especially to say, you know, we said, hey, we got the money, let's build out the core. The costs are only going to go up. Here, the difference is, when we increase these folks, the cost will go on forever, and their future raises will be based on this. However, their current raises are being artificially lowered, because they were hired in at a low part. So, and with a source of dollars, I keep looking at that voluntary additional payment into... into the VBO, let's, let's just, let's get rid of these, this little bump in our road, and take care of these 34 folks and just, and just be done with it. And, I mean, that's, that's where I would like to see us as a Finance Committee, take this report, and, yeah. And then there's still tons of work that has to go into this, that we alluded to in the committee, about future pay scales, how they work, you know, and I hate to say the word steps, but I'll say it anyways, how does that fit within this group of people? And the truly mythical part is we want to rename the management pay plan because it's not all management, it's the non-unionized folks, and we don't want to define them by the negative term of non-unionized, so. So there's, there's an award for somebody who can rename this group of employees, but Commissioner Vandermon will pay that reward.
There you go.
So anyways, that's, that's my following up based on the work we did through the summer.
Okay, Roger.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments so I understand this. With the current system that the administration or Darryl in his office has implemented, we're down to about 10 percent of those folks out of the MPP that need an adjustment. Is that right? Wrong numbers?
I'm gonna have Amy come up.
Well, just to continue on, I think it's about 10 percent. So I don't know exactly where the money is gonna come from, I'm gonna leave that up to the Fiscal Services and Darryl, but I, I think that we need to make some adjustments for these employees, and I, I agree with the premise with Commissioner Bolkowski, however, I'm not gonna specify exactly where I think the money should come from, so.
It's a suggestion, I don't know.
Yeah, right, got it. But, so, I, I think we're making progress in this area. If you look at 214, we were at 91, and now we're down to 39. So I, I just don't think it's gonna take that much, well, maybe it'll take that much effort to get it, to write this, but I think since, you know, 2010, I think there has been somewhat of this compression issue, and we need to take care of that, so. That's my position.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'd like to add, if we could, is it possible for this report, once it's accepted, to go on our website as one of the easy clicks on the left-hand side where we do, you know, links to things? I think this would be good to put out there for information purposes. Is that...
It's public record, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Matt?
Just to clarify what we're doing here, so receiving this report just makes it an official part of the record, and then what's the subsequent steps to accomplish the recommendations of the report?
Well, thanks for bringing that up. You know, my question to Darryl is, what does, what does it mean when it's a high priority? Does that mean we're gonna get it done this year, or?
Well, the, the strategy that I had put in place was that we would add appropriate additional funding. We did that in 2015, we've done it in 2016, and we, we're, we've included it in the 2017 budget. So the strategy started long before the committee met because we knew we had an issue, and it's not just compression, it's penetration into the, into the range that an employee has, so it's, it's more than, than just compression. And it's taken a long time to get to this problem over years, and it's gonna take some time to work our way out of the problem, and the intent was to have a systematic approach to get out of the problem. And I've tried to address it with incremental steps. If you want additional funding to handle it in, in shorter order, then I'm going to have to find that additional money somewhere, and it could come from any variety of areas. Right now, some are certain, like Commissioner Bolkowski mentioned, there may be others that are clarified after the election. So, you know, it is a high priority, we have tried to address it systematically without, without sacrificing the integrity of the, of the pay system. So if you, I mean, with, with money, I can address it easily, you know, but remember, this is compounded. The $200,000 in 2015 became $400,000 in 2016, and become $600,000 in 2017 because of the compounding effect, just like our wages go up. So we're trying to balance the county's financial with, with this problem, and I think we've made some good headway into it over the past couple of years, and we still have some way, you know, way to go.
Roger, just a readjust. The way I understand is, I understand the compression and penetration, but structurally, do we have a problem, Amy, with these pay ranges? Do they overlap? Are they too short? How can we fix this structurally?
The, the problem that we have structurally is we don't have an institutionalized solution to move people from the bottom to the market rate in the pay range. That's what that $200,000 a year has been doing, is allowing for above and beyond the cost of living, a little bit more of an increase for people who are at the bottom to move them through. In terms of the breadth of our pay ranges and the overlap and all of that, I don't see that being the big problem, it's just there isn't a mechanism, like what would exist for the other 82 percent of our employees who are part of a collective bargaining unit, to move people from the bottom to the market rate, so they just sit there at the bottom of the range if you don't put that $200,000 a year in.
But if, what, I guess I'm a little bit confused. Okay, so we have 39 employees that aren't moving.
Moving, but not fast enough.
Not fast enough.
Yeah, yeah.
So how do we, how do we solve that? I, you know, I'm looking for solutions, I'm not...
Yeah, well, the recommendation in the report is that we reconfigure the structure of the pay grade for MPP employees to make it look similar to the other 82 percent where there's this step progression that automatically moves them to the point in the range that would reflect the market over a period of no more than five years.
Is that a new idea that come out of this study? So it wasn't part of the administration solution?
No, yeah.
A structural problem that we have?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments? The motions to receive, is that... Roger, you talked a little bit about we're down to 39, and that's, and that's good.
Right.
Unless you're one of the 39.
Right, I, I get that, I wanna solve this.
And that's bad. So, so I'd like to see, at least part of the instructions with this is that we figure out a way of getting, where the money comes from, I could say I don't care, but I don't, I don't wanna put on the administration where exactly it has to come from, that's, that's their job, but I'd like to see Darryl, with this, something that's included in the 17 budget that's gonna get this thing, get those 39 people back to that midpoint.
Yeah, and it just, I mean, from a full disclosure perspective, I was the one that, believe it or not, asked for the language to be inserted that when revenue is available. So, so the report seems a little lukewarm, thanks in part to me, so, so, in spite of me...
Duly noted.
What's that?
Duly noted.
Thank you. So in spite of me saying...
Wish I'd have known that in the beginning.
There you go. So, so instead of me trying not to be lukewarm today, it's just, again, we only have so much money. At the same time, fair's fair, so, I'll be quiet.
So, just, just a point of order. You know, you've received a, a report here generally on the agenda, no actions necessary to receive that report. It's note, it's put on the agenda, noted as received, okay? If you have action that you want to take on a report, receiving it does not get that action done. There's not an endorsement, you're just receiving, okay? Chair, you can rece, you can refer specific recommendations to the appropriate committee for review or recommendation to the board. Kind of covered what some of those recommendations were. Or you can request it be put on a future agenda for discussion. We've kind of gotten into some discussion of that report today, but typically today when you receive that report, no other action is taken, okay?
When you receive a report, you can't discuss it?
It's usually put on an agenda for discussion at a future meeting. The action is basically to give you...
So according to our bylaws, we're just receiving this report.
You have an opportunity to get it, digest it, it can be put on for a future meeting for discussion and recommendations.
Okay, I'll hold my comments for a future meeting.
Go ahead, Matt, then I'm gonna...
Could we have, maybe after we're through the next few budget work sessions, but have a work session that the whole commission could be a part of?
Well, the question I was gonna ask, Ray, is do we need another work session? Or can we just, my, my guess is we don't need to, we don't need a huge all-out work session on the budget any longer because we're still gonna be dealing with it from here, but, so, we, we could, at any one of our views, I could put it back on the agenda for discussion. Now, the, the reason I wanted to have some discussion today was that time's not on our side right now to get, get it incorporated in the 17 budget. I'd like to have that, that be, if, however we're gonna solve this, be included in the 17 budget. So as long as we can do it at a different time before that happens, fine.
What is the actual cost of that solution? To eliminate this in the 17 budget and not talk about it again?
We're ready, you got 200 going in, right?
How much more is needed?
Yeah, I, I don't have the report in front of me, but I think it's about 150.
Only an additional 150 dollars?
Yeah, for the low, low price, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I have a question for a counselor. Tom, so what we're doing today is accepting the report, and I think the staff understands what high priority means, so. I think, I'll just wait for the vote and accept the report.
That's right, there's no vote.
Yeah, there's no vote to accept the report?
I'm telling you, it's not necessary. You've had a motion, and you have a motion on the floor at the moment, but...
We can vote on that to receive it, that won't be a problem.
Yeah, I just thought we could receive and file it. We don't do that anymore.
Under your standing rules, it's not, under your standing rules, it's not required for you to have a motion to receive and file.
Okay.
Standing rules provide typically that it gets put on the agenda as received, and that is, that gives no effect to anything in the report, gives you an opportunity to turn around and read it and digest it, and the chair has the ability to turn around and ask for certain recommendations to be put forth for recommendations to the full board, or to put it on an agenda at a future meeting for further discussion, okay?
Okay. I may have followed up a little, we're gonna vote on receiving it, it's not the first time I've followed up.
You followed up a lot, but we'll let you go.
In the last, although I don't have much time. And then, and then, then I think as chair, that I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that Darryl bring it back to the next finance committee with, with a way of...
With some recommendations.
With recommendations of how we're gonna do it, okay? So all in favor of receiving, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you. Darryl, would you please bring back at the next finance meeting?
Did you get all that, Pam? Okay.
All right. Hope we did this, I think everybody understands.
I don't.
Just that sometimes I don't do it correctly. Let's go to miscellaneous, please, anyone miscellaneous?
Just a quick update, the senior millage committee last week did finish processing all of the numbers, and so I'm, I assume that ends up coming before the floor, maybe not.
He's too young to be on it. He brings the age of that committee.
Just preparing for the...
So, Matt, let me just ask, who else was on that?
Stan Steck and Carol. We're both on.
But you have to be 18 to be on it, right?
Yeah. So, so just, just, what did you think of the process?
I, I thought it was a great process. I had been partially involved last year, and then Diane stepped into my place because I was out of the country that week, but, yeah, it's a very thorough process. The AAA staff are well organized and really get into the details, and really care that the money's being spent effectively, so I was very impressed.
Well, and thanks for doing that, you know, and that's, that's part of Kent County and how we do things, and how we, I think we do them right, and, and making sure that, you know, the tax dollars that we approve to go to different organizations are spent appropriately, and, so, thank you very much. Anyone else? Really? Roger.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
Mas era Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.